If you'd just remember to speak into the microphones. Previous meetings to this one, we've had some problems where people are not speaking in the microphones and I'm just not picking them up. So yeah, if you would, just talk directly into it, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Yes, Jack, thank you for letting us know.
You're on.
Okay, it is seven oh four P M. And I call this September twenty first, two thousand twenty-three meeting of Cecil Township Planning Commission to order. I apologize, I did not have a high enough priority on typing up the meeting minutes from last month, so we do not have those to approve. Do I have a motion to table that approval for next month?
I'll make that motion.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jack, do we have a review of any previous decisions that we need to be aware of with the supervisors or any directive or directions that we should be aware of?
Dan, I don't recall anything major other than the tabling of the of this.
They also they also approved the Koski subdivision.
Okay, that was the one addition, and that is recorded now, I think so.
Yeah, I think that's the only one that they.
That's the only one that came up.
Right.
PDV has not come in yet. I talked to Harshman this this week and they they said that they were looking for the plan. And I said, well, I haven't received it yet. And I talked to Shannon and she said, you know, so they're bringing a Mylar in and I'll get the signatures and get it over to you.
Sorry, that was approved also, right? That was approved at the supervisors' last time.
Okay, I don't believe we have any old business. Any new business is blank as well. As far as, I know it's under discussion, but ordinances and amendments, I know we have more to discuss there, so I think technically we could keep it there. Dan, you provided us a great overview. Is there anything that you'd like to add for the record?
Yeah, I want to I want to get up. I just hold on one second.
Okay.
Just was double checking. Hey, Jack, we just sort of I'm just updating the point. So from the supervisor's agenda last month, they did also approve the GSL land development, right?
The, okay, the supervisor.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the agenda. Just wanted to make sure we caught everything so the supervisors know. Koski Andrews, we talked about. They did the rank plan also.
Yeah, I I'm sorry, they did, yes.
And the PVD, PVD.
Right.
So there was actually four of them.
Sorry about that.
I just.
I just drew a blank. I apologize.
I wasn't there.
Yeah, you're you're correct. I I'm.
I wasn't there, so I just wanted to double check. So, all right, I'm gonna get up. So I gave you a little agenda related to where we kind of stand with things and. Okay, so the first thing I just started off to give you a status on the map changes. So with respect to with respect to the map changes, the if everybody recalls, the S D district, there were two properties to be changed there from from R one to S D. Hold on, I'll go back. I'll go over them again. No problem. It's okay. No worries. It's okay. Just give me a second. I got everything here. Okay, here's the.
Thank you, Jack.
Thanks, Jack.
So if you recall, this is in South Point. This is the Barney and the Salski property, Jack? Barney. Right, so the proposal, when you saw this already, was to to rezone this to S D from R one. And I believe the planning commission already made this recommendation. The supervisors did not approve it at their meeting because they wanted to do everything at one time and we weren't ready for the one property. That got a little bit confusing, which I'll go over with you in a minute. Okay? So this was this was the first one. And then if you recall, we had the Fuchs property, which was to be changed from R one to C one, and you also recommended that one. It's in here. Yeah, it's this one right here. And and if you recall, on the Fuchs property, Jason had recommended was considering to try to get some other Fuchs properties which relied over here, some of them in I one. And I think one of them up here was in R one, to try to get those rezoned to also to see because it made sense to get a connection to to the road there. So reviewed that with with some people. The discussion related to that was that that wasn't to to call up Mr. Fuchs and see what he had to say at this time. He and the other part of this is that the solicitor has has ruled that these properties couldn't be added with open up opening up the hearing again, if you recall. So again, this is a map with the Fuchs properties in the parcel lines on it. The the other parcels that he owns are the the three the three pieces I just had them. Yeah, right here, this one here, this one here, and this one here. So essentially, what we're saying on this one is that that we're just gonna leave this one as it is. We're not gonna add anything else on to it, if that makes sense. Everybody with me on that one?
Yeah, I'm still gonna have the same concerns Jason does. I understand where the solicitor is saying, hey, we can't request this without additional hearing.
But we talked to the property owner. He has no immediate plans for it. If at some point in time that he decides to actually develop it, he says he has another way into the site. Yeah, he has another way into the site. He doesn't absolutely need this, but he said that at the time that something happens with it, he would consider the rezoning himself. So you don't, you know, you can, I I think that I think that's adequate just to get the ball rolling. Just my opinion. You can, you guys can, I mean, we we asked to look at it, come back and just give you the answer. That's the answer. Okay?
Dan, the thought was to go from R one to C one, but we're staying R one?
No, 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 as planned.
Oh, to C one?
Yeah, it's gonna be R one to C one.
Okay.
It was just a matter of expanding it a little bit further.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Some of the smaller some of the smaller parcels that are going towards where it is C one, next to I two.
Yes, got it.
Oh, so so you you can you can make any recommendation that you want. All I'm telling you is that that when it goes to the supervisors, they're not gonna push the fact. So there's there's different ways you can do rezoning, right? It can either come from the board or the applicant can make it, make the make the recommendation. So in this case, the board with your your recommendation too is making the recommendation on the big farm. Jason asked to look at the other pieces. If you still want to make that recommendation that they be included, you're you're more than welcome to do it, but I don't think the board's gonna, they're just gonna approve it as it is. That's the direction that I've been given. And the reason is that, I mean, we inquired with the property owner, do you want to wait longer or would you like this to be done now? The property owner's opinion was that he'd take it as it is. So that's good enough for me.
Would it be acceptable if we did a recommendation to approve as is with a potential to review adjacent parcels in the future, not as a condition?
Or recommend that that, you know, next time that they do rezoning, they add them on.
Okay.
Because there is an advertising process, there's a notification process and everything else that has to occur.
Understandable. Thank you.
All right, so that's that's the easy part of the map changes. So what I'm gonna go over with you now is Koski's property. So if you recall, Koski's property and the recommendation was to change this piece of B P D to I one, as shown right here. Leave the B P D in place as it is until we work out what we're gonna do with M U R and M U C and then possibly make another recommendation here or 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 leave this as R two and, you know, make this R two. I'm not sure what what the final thought is on this. The thought was we get through this part of the rezoning and just take care of this piece, which is most important now, and then consider what's going on here. So when that all happened, one of the supervisors had some discussions with Mr. Koski. If everybody's aware, the Montour Trail is gonna try to make a connection through the Koski property and bring it over to Muse School. So there'll be a Montour Trail connection to the school. So with that happening, Mr. Koski met with the trail people and I'm gonna show you another map. So this is the real map. Okay, this is the real existing features map out there. So thi- this, a- as you see this map, what the decision was was to take and align the trail right along the edge or the top of the edge of the slope. So this property climbs very steeply up out of Muse from the back of these lots on Muse and comes up to a ridge. So the this trail is laid out, this is kind of, this was laid out by me following the contours of the land. You you climb up to this point and you come right across the ridge right here. So what's proposed now for this piece of land, what we'd like to do to protect the residents of Muse around the Koski property is that the R three zone would be extended out to the outside edge of the trail. This at some point in time might be mixed use commercial or mixed use residential. We don't know what it's gonna be yet. But it would, there's no change proposed here now, what I'm gonna show you. And then in addition to that, the we extend the R three and then that R three would also be extended around this perimeter for a distance of fifty feet beyond where it is. So there's a couple reasons for that. In the industrial zone district, when this be all becomes industrial, there's a requirement for a hundred and fifty foot buffer between industrial uses and residential property. So there couldn't be any buildings or anything closer than a hundred and fifty feet from the from the proposed zoning line. So by moving this zoning line an additional fifty feet, it does two things. It effectively makes the buffer two hundred feet, which makes everybody happy. And then there's a number of encroachments for people having installed other things on Mr. Koski's property. So in the future, he could subdivide this and sell these pieces off to the people that have property there and they could just extend their lots and it would all be R three, if that makes sense. Okay, so what what I I get back to is the the map that I showed you here. So the the change in this is, and and this is how it will look. So see how the the light green extends out here along this edge? That's the fifty feet. And then it comes along here fifty feet and then it comes out now here, way out here to represent the trail. This is like an additional five acres, which is gonna be like buffer in through there and allow the trail at the top slope. So this is what the supervisors will be voting on, will will be on on October second, will be to vote on changing this O two three to I two. And then I I'm sorry, I I one and a portion of it to R three along this edge. And then they'll also be voting on taking twenty-three oh one and making a portion of that to be extended to be R three. And then this will still be up for consideration when they finally get through the M U C and the M U R, and then there'll be another round of zoning changes potentially coming because if you recall, we left Rising Road out of the picture because of all the changes up there. So that's the summary of the map changes. Any questions? I don't think that there's anything that the planning commission needs to vote on, other than if you do want to make you could make a a recommendation on the Fuchs property like you talked about. And then you could also make a recommendation to to recommend the revisions of the Koski property. So, all right, so that's that's that. Do you want me to just continue through the whole the whole deal or do you want to do that now before we get into other complicated things?
Do you all want to make those recommendations now and then move on to ordinances? Okay. Go ahead, Barb.
Dan, you're saying we don't really need to make any recommendations.
It's up to you. I'm just I'm just suggesting because.
Because they're going to look at this and decide whether to approve it or not, right? So that we don't need to make any action.
Well, I I think it I think it would make the 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 board of supervisors feel good to know that you looked at this Koski thing. And I can report to them that the planning commission looked at it and made that recommendation. I think that would be good. At least that one. It's your decision on the Fuchs property whether you want to say something or not. That's that's I just was hearing that. All right.
Would anybody like to make a motion? Regarding recommendations for the Fuchs property and the Koski properties.
Sure, I'll make a motion. We recommend the revisions to the zoning map as presented by the Gateway Engineers specifically for the Koski property and the rezoning of the B P D to R three and I one and the R two to R three.
I'll second that motion because you made our job much easier. It was so well articulated.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Does anybody feel strongly about making a motion for the Fuchs property outside of me? Would you like to do that as well, Dave?
Uh, if you want to.
Oh, my.
With your special the the bulk of it is the R one to the C one, but then how you want to address the surrounding parcels.
Okay, I will make a motion to recommend the zoning map changes from R one to C one regarding the Fuchs property with an additional recommendation that any future zoning changes in the township in the future review the R one properties near or adjacent contingent and adjacent to the C one property owned by Mr. Fuchs for modification to C one as well.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Dan, you're up for ordinances.
Okay, on to the ordinances. Let's go for the let's go for the easy one first. So what happened after the solicitor got a look at, if you recall, we had two different ordinances. We had one with general changes to the U D O and then the second one was to deal with the additional M U C and M U R. So I'm gonna go over the general one first. Just a couple minor changes to that at the advice of the solicitor. The portion of the ordinance that was referring to accessory dwelling units, granny flats, if you recall, we'll call them. The recommendation based upon some past issues in the township was that this not be included. The solicitor's further further looking at this and it may come back at some point in time, but right now the recommendation is to move remove it. The second item is that there were two items and they actually pertain to timing related to approvals. One was the timing for conditional use. It expired after one year. It's now already been, the supervisors took that that issue and the issue of the site plan approval, melded them into one ordinance to get that out of the way right away, and that was already approved at their meeting in our in their eating meeting in September. So essentially, we we removed those two items from this standalone ordinance. So that's it. It's it's as you saw it before. We're really just down to some some things that need cleaned up, so. So this section six and section seven have been removed from the from the from the ordinance now. And anything related to the accessory dwelling unit has been removed also. So this one would be in order for your consideration if you want to have any other questions, but if you wanted to make a recommendation based upon this latest revision of the ordinance, I think that that would be in order because this is, again, teed up and ready for the supervisors to to go with if you do make that recommendation.
So, Dan, we would just be recommending these proposed revisions. Is that?
Correct.
Okay.
There I'll call them general revisions to the U D O. You know, as as stated in the ordinance that's that's been presented to you.
And everything regarding accessory uses or?
Yeah, it's gone.
All gone.
Yes.
Does anybody have any questions or concerns? Okay, would we like to make a motion on this or would we like to move on to the next ordinance that needs reviewed? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We recommend the approval of the general revisions to the U D O as presented by the Gateway Engineers.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. So moved.
Okay, moving on. So the other ordinance, if you recall, we had worked through the M U R and M U C. So just to just just to recap, we're creating two new districts. We've added some definitions in order to create that new districts, those new districts. So we have a residential mixed use district and the uses by right in that are really just single family homes. And if you recall, the residential mixed use district does allow for mixed use. And within the use regulations, there was some discussion related to how much single family, how much apartments and how much of the multi-family, that being either duplexes or townhouses. So what we did was we actually took the planning commission's advice and we did a little comparison of couple developments in the township and one not too far away. All right. Zoom here, so. So. Yes. Okay, can everybody see that? So what we did was took a look at McConnell Trails, the overlook both in Cecil. We took a look another look at Summit Station, which is developing in South Park, and it actually included some apartments in it in addition to single families and towns. So what we did based upon the discussion was we looked at the acreage related to those. So so like in McConnell Trails, just go through an example here. On the acreage side of things, there were thirty-two acres of of single family, eight acres of townhomes, duplex carriage homes, five and a half percent, no multi-family. There's this much area was in buffer and this much in open space because you recall it was a P R D. So what we really looked at was in terms of the percentage, the approximate percentage of the total. So there was a total of hundred and eight acres. So obviously, you know, pretty pretty close to thirty. When you when you look at just that percentage of the total, that was about thirty percent of the land area was used for for single family, eight percent for townhouses, five for duplex carriage, so it's like thirteen, no multi-family. So therein lies some basic numbers. So so move on to Summit Station in South Park, ninety-four acres, just right around that hundred acre area. Twenty-eight percent single families, a lot more townhouses there, twenty-two percent. And then eleven acres of the or eleven percent, ten point three acres, was devoted to an apartment complex. So within that apartment complex, they were able to get two reasonable buildings. I I believe they got close to two hundred apartments in ten acres. So when you think about this, and I was trying to explain this to somebody, it was like, oh, you if you make a thirty percent single family, you know, they're you don't think in units, think in terms of land area. Because you can in in a for a multi-family plan on ten acres, you can get a couple hundred apartments. I know that roughly on a project I'm working on right now, where fifteen acres will get you three hundred apartments. If you have relatively flat ground to work with or you have a flat pad to work with, that's what you need. So that Summit Station, that's the only one, like I said, that had that had multi-family in it. And then the overlook, we looked at thirty-nine percent more single family than the other ones. So it had, again, about ten percent between townhomes and duplexes, no garden apartments. So we used that analysis and we said, hey, no less than thirty percent to be single family. No greater than ten percent of the land can be used for townhomes and duplexes or multi-family, if that makes sense.
I just, I want to clarify, or I I need clarification, I should say. or I, I need clarification, I should say, that, uh, like, I like how McConnell's Trails is set up. I think it's set up very well. Um, with the townhomes and the duplex carriage, that's a total of thirteen percent. Are we saying that we wouldn't be able to do that moving forward?
No, I mean, this was just strictly based upon these numbers.
Okay.
This is what Matt, my, our planner, and I sort of said, hey, that kinda makes sense. I mean, if you wanna adjust them, strictly your call. We're presenting these numbers to you tonight. We've given you recommendations. You wanna tweak it up and go a little bit higher or lower, you can make that recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah, because this would change, right? Because that is thirteen, which exceeds the ten percent proposed.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure duplex carriage wasn't, I mean, multi-family is essentially apartments. And that's?
That's correct.
Okay.
And, and those are set in stone, or if I might develop, or I come in, can I request?
Um, I mean, you could, you could.
A modification?
It's in a zoning ordinance, so you would have to go, you would have to get a, a variance to, to change it.
That percentage?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it does control it, I mean.
And sets a baseline.
Yeah, exactly. And I think that that was the planning commission's concern was without some guidance, what would they do? Now, you can make it all single-family because you just, you just have a minimum, but you're limited on the multi-family, which was, I think that was the idea the board was trying to do. They were trying to, although McConnell Trails is fine, some people say too many multi-family units, you know? So, um, in terms of, of, of our review of things, that was one of the things that, uh, was reviewed. And then, um, we did, we did a meeting with a, a developer, uh, two supervisors, which is all you can have without violating the sunshine law. Um, two supervisors and, uh, attended a meeting with a developer to discuss his parcel. And out of that outcome of that meeting, there was some discussion related to the issue of the maximum size tenant, if you remember, we went through, through this, this here. So I just highlighted this again, a comment from, in, in kind of the, so, so, so the board of supervisors, their general direction on this is, we want more commercial, but we wanna do it responsibly. And I guess the idea of the M U C is that somebody's gonna make, they're gonna make their own plan, like a Hastings over in South Fayette. Uh, if they wanna put commercial in there, they're gonna control the commercial. Why, why should we limit what they do in terms of the square footage of anyone building? If somebody wants to build something that's bigger or, and it fits within the confines of what they want to do, who knows, could be a recreation center, maybe it's a fifty thousand square foot recreation center. Why should we limit the non-residential component? So the, the, I'm just running this by you guys to see, uh, and, and tell you that the, I, the, you know, basically, my recommendation now is to remove this. Just from the thought process that you want, if your, if your goal is to get more, re- remember, if they, if they do this mixed-use commercial and they put residential in it, they're gonna be planning around this. Similar to like a Hastings, they're gonna be building a whole neighborhood. Uh, so, and, and it's on a smaller scale. I don't think that we'll get up to this thing, but, but, but again, you know, you, you don't wanna limit yourself, so that's, that's the second recommendation. Okay? So that's the easy part. So, a- at, at the meeting with this, um, this group, and I just wanna show you that the property that they, that they represent. So, this is Rising Road. Uh, this is Route Fifty right here. Uh, this is actually the road that leads up past the state maintenance facility that takes you up onto the expressway. Yeah, should be Cecil Way. So, the, the, the people that own the property up here, they own this, this parcel here, this parcel, and this large parcel right here. These are the three properties that are in play. And, um, they, they said that.
What's that random little square in the middle of that?
I think that might be a tower or something. It might be just a lease line. I, that's not our parcel map, it's.
Okay.
Clue. Right, right, yeah. So they, it's either under control, they're, they're either have it under control or they own it, one or the other. I think Burns and Scallow owns this one. This might be Sullivan. Both of those, and they, they have those under agreement, and they have the third one here. Okay. So what's, and he's looking to sell a piece of that to her? Okay, so, a- and if, um, you know, just, just going back in time, I'll open up another, um, try that one more time. So, as, as it was originally proposed and sent out and the public hearing was held, uh, we don't show South Fayette Way in here, but it's, it's somewhere kinda right, right in through here. So, this is, this is, what's her name, Jack Nancy Burns, did you say?
Nancy Marshall.
Marshall, I'm sorry. Nancy Marshall owns the piece that's right here. Yeah, that's Tomahawk, yep. So this was all proposed to be mixed-use commercial. So, in, in discussions with, with the, uh, the developer, Burns and Scallow, uh, they came in and sort of kicked around some stuff. So, what, what we said to them is, listen, if you have some comments on this, give us your comments, right? So, I got those this afternoon. I didn't even send it off to you guys, 'cause I didn't wanna clog up your inbox, but I gave you a copy of it tonight. It's the last piece that you have. It's in color. The changes are in color. The last attachment that I gave you in that big group right here. Troy, this one. Yeah, it's the one with the email on the top. Yes. Okay, so. This, this started, this, this started with, um, they, they wanted to, they, they didn't disagree that, um, you could, you could do, um, that, that they would try to get some commercial on those properties, but they said, you need some, uh, in addition to having single-family houses within, uh, this M U C district, what they were proposing was that there could be some ability to have townhouses or some other multi-family, uh, type of situation here. So, let's just go through their changes. So, what, what their recommendations were, um, in, in this M U C area, that you'd have the ability and a definition for an assisted living facility. So, if you wanted to include an assisted living facility, that's, that's the same. I'll keep going back to Hastings. I, I believe they have one over there, uh, as a part of that development, or in or around it. Um, that's the one up, I think it's right along Mayville Road. Uh, so, they, they add that. Then, the biggest change that they make, and we sort of discussed how we could do it, single-family residential developments, uh, development and planned residential development, uh, only. And this was to be set up just to be, like, sort of like a P R D. Uh, and you were going to be able to have, a- and the idea here is that they wanted to add on to this. See where we were. Let's go to our section first. So they added that definition, then as we got into, okay. We got into section E, mixed-use commercial, uh, uses by right. So, we were only allowing for, in this M U C, to only allow for single-family homes. That's how, that's how it was proposed. So they said, why wouldn't you allow other forms of, of, of housing within the M U C? And, and this is their proposed language. Uh, one of those would be that, that the requirement, that it must be, you know, you could do single-family. If planned residential development includes uses other than single-family development, developments, uh, then it must be located within blank feet from a major highway intersection. So because this property is located right along, uh, the highway, in, in, close to, you, you wouldn't set a precedent for other areas in the township where you could do this. I'd probably define this a little bit better. You know, maybe even, um, you know, so many feet from, uh, we would say a connection to a major highway. I didn't really get a chance to study this, but it'd probably be, you know, that would be, probably be the better way to say it, maybe a thousand feet or so within, from a connection to a, a major intersection. And then they just threw in all the other P R D requirements that, that, that we have. So just reading through this, again, I didn't get much, fifty-foot buffer, we talked about height limitation, five stories, whichever is less. Respect of P R D commercial, uh, shall be read as follows. Accessory, commercial service and sit-down trade and other personal services may be permitted or required where such uses are skilled primarily to service residents of the P R D and the surrounding community. Because of the primarily residential nature of P R D, only those commercial uses compatible with, eh, with reasonably associated residential development shall be permitted. No industrial uses shall be permitted. Um, and then they limited it to eight dwelling units per acre, which is currently what we have. Um, they threw in as a use by right an apartment hotel. I don't have any opinion on that one way or another. Again, this is a developer, so, you know, I think they were, they got into it and they say, hey, well, what about this, what about that? Um, I, and, and they understand that the scale of this is it's supposed to be a residential. You know, if they do mixed-use commercial, they're gonna have, you know, th- they, they wanna be able to do the, you know, live and, and, uh, and have, the way they termed it was have amenities available and associated with the development. So I guess they look at an apartment hotel, I don't know what you define that as, as something smaller. Um, you know, a certain number of rooms, I don't know what that means. That, you probably need a definition for that. Um, assisted living facility.
I would assume it was something similar to like an extended stay.
We gotta be careful with that, or it could be just a boutique hotel that's just a, you know, something that people can use. You know, that are mostly people that live in the community would probably use.
Grace, Dan, that, that would need a definition.
Yeah.
We would have to define that.
Uh, they threw in a communications tower, which I think that comes right out. No way. Hospital, hotel, um, nursing convenience, nursing convalescent or rest home, retail sales, self-storage, veterinary hospital. So they added those in. And, um, they also said, does it, they also asked the question, that, that, the, the things that we added, that if you recall, in the mixed-use commercial, uh, th- these were sort of, sort of the uses by right. The, the sip, the simple, not the simple stuff, but the stuff that wasn't real heavy. And then, when we got to this one, we said, hey, you gotta be along a state road because of the traffic. The idea of this was, if you recall, some of the, some of the areas that were considered for this M U C, when you, I don't have the whole map here, but if you look at the land use map, there was, there was a bunch of this scattered throughout the community. So the idea was that, hey, you could, you could get a little bit higher density if you were on nine eighty, but we wouldn't want that same development along Shafoni Road to have that, those type of uses. So, um, we get back to, we get back to, um, you know, I think we still keep these as uses on the state road. We don't make them permitted or conditional uses. They say state roads, these are the actual conditional uses that were recommended, and then they threw in a, a planned shopping center, which I think is, I think that's much more than we planned for shopping center, I think, of in, in a C one district. I mean, that's kinda what we tried to do with Fuchs. You know, a big parcel that could actually really do something more well-thought-out. So, uh, they also talked about the maximum square footage that we talked about. They threw in the maximum building height. So, those were their comments, um. So, I, I think, I think the option on this one is tonight, whether the planning commission wants to sit on this. You, you could, you could say, I want some of these changes, or I agree with them on some of these changes. You could look at it for another month and come back and discuss it next month, what you think are appropriate, what's not appropriate. Or you could say, I don't want any of it at all. It's, it's really up to you as, as to your call. My thought would be that, that I think that, like the assist, just in, in quick discussions and thoughts, the assisted living stuff makes sense. Uh, the, the single-family, I need to look at that a little bit more, but adding that on and being close to a highway, I think you could up the density, uh, you know, in that setting. And then, the other, the other use is no communication tower. I don't think a hospital's the right place to put, I mean, a hospital's a big deal. That's gotta be close to some major transportation. So I don't think a hospital's a good idea. Um, retail sales, I, I don't, I mean, we, we kinda define the type of retail sales we want by the uses that are allowed, right? As opposed to the Santa Blank retail sales. So I'm not sure that I agree with that one. Uh, self-storage facility, they seem to be popular. There are not a lot of traffic. They are a use when you have apartments, so that's, that, that one doesn't scare me. Veterinary hospital doesn't scare me. And then, you know, I, I don't think you put the shopping center in ea- either. I agree, this comes out. I think the seventy-five feet we had before.
Wasn't it five stories or seventy-five feet, whichever is less?
Yes, I think. So that's a lot to chew on. That's why I saved it for last.
Yeah, Dan, could you take the next month and, and basically incorporate whatever comments we have and whatever you feel is
Yeah, we could take.
best out of these and
We, we could take this one as they've given to us and strike out what we think should be striked out, what they proposed, and then bring it back to you next month.
There's a lot.
It's not right.
Yes, right.
I, I would say, as far as hospital was concerned, I have a feeling that they possibly included that because of the U P M C children. I, I would say, as far as hospital was concerned, I have a feeling that they possibly included that because of the UPMC Children's in South Fayette, like that smaller one, where it is good, a good facility to have in the community. That one is very close for us, so I don't know if it's something that we should be concerned about incorporating, particularly with the, the tracks that they're looking at. But, I, I, I think that's probably why they went there.
Maybe, Christie, maybe there should be some limitation on the size of the hospital number of beds, or something like that.
Well, I think that's with a five-story or seventy-five feet. That limits it, doesn't it?
Yeah, the, I mean, that limits the height. You know, we're, we're also taking about the, taking out the twenty thousand square feet.
Oh, yeah.
So, it's, it's wide open at that point for anything non-residential.
It seems like they misunderstood, uh, the use by right versus conditional use when it's along the state road, so I think those, where there's the, does this mean these uses are only permitted by right if they front a state road, and it's, I think that's pretty clear. I agree with you that the, um, planned shopping center should be struck from there. Um, I like that they articulated the difference between assisted living and a nursing convalescent or a rest home. Um, because unfortunately, I have some experience there, and, uh, I think that clarification needs to be made. Um, my only concern with the, the big chunk of single-family and, and all of that, that they opted in as item C, is, eh, this seems to be more under mixed-use commercial, in articulating what's allowed commercially. Um, I don't know, it just, it just, I need time to chew on that one. I think a lot of what they do have makes a lot of good sense, particularly saying that it should be essentially what would benefit, as you were referencing Hastings, what would benefit that immediate community and the surrounding communities. But I would want to look at that a little bit more, and I think the twenty thousand square feet, as far as what they're saying to, to limit it, particularly for office buildings, we want to be respectful of that, um, because we want development, and we want it to be responsible, but we also want it to be something that, uh, is invited to the district, to the township. Does anybody else have any questions or comments that they want to make regarding the comments provided by the developer, or the changes um, redlined, or lined in the, um, the ordinance from Gateway? Are we okay with the percentage recommendations under use regulations for the residential mixed-use development? A minimum of thirty for single-family, thirty percent, um, a maximum of ten percent for two-family and or townhomes, and a maximum of ten percent for multifamily and garden apartment uses?
Yeah, I think based on the other examples, those seem to be a good baseline.
I agree.
I agree. We agree on striking the twenty thousand feet?
Yes.
Just making sure we're all on the same page for whatever, um.
What was the concern with the planned shopping center?
Just that it would be more, um, that it would be more beneficial for it to be in something like C-one, where that's what the property is, is to be used for, and the traffic would be good for versus a mixed-use.
So we're looking to have that removed?
Yes.
From.
Well, they, they wanted to add it.
Right.
We're just saying, we don't think that's a good idea.
So, so one, one, one way to approach this, and again, trying to think with, with the way the supervisors are, their goal of this, to create more commercial. I don't want to limit things, but what you could do, I mean, like, they only, they only applied, uh, you know, this, this part about adding the multifamily as, as something to be within a major, close to a major highway or an intersection. So, uh, you know, we, we could, we could define this a little bit better, and then you could, you could actually come down, and, and, just a different way to do it, uh, what I'm, what I'm, again, I'm just thinking out loud, is do you come down and say, uh, uses, uses, um, uses by right uh, required to be within a certain distance of a major intersection? And then, then maybe it's, makes sense to include some of these other things that they want, like a planned shopping center, you know what I mean? That, that, does that make any sense?
Yes.
And then you could, you could take some of the heavier uses and just apply them to that, and buffer yourself from, you know, being out in, on Elizabeth Cowden's property, trying to put a hospital. That's an extreme example, but. And it, it just, it just gives more flexibility to that property over on Rising, because that's our only place to be able to do it. I say that, and then as soon as we pass this, somebody will come in with somewhere. But at least we have the ability to, to have, have a zone, so. Okay, I, I think I know what to do, I can get my guy Matt to help me clean this up and give you guys a recommendation back out, and think about this one next month. I think, I think my advice from the, from the supervisors is, you know, let's take our time with this, make sure we get it right. Yeah, so we've been talking about this now for like four months, which is good.
So there's no need to table?
I don't think there's any need to table, you're not making a recommendation on this one.
Yep.
Pay your recommendations on several items, so. I think we're, I know we're, we're good on the, uh, mapping stuff, you guys were good on the general uh, changes, with those changes that, that occurred, and then we'll come back to you with this, with a, uh, a suggestion next month based upon the developers' comments.
Sounds good.
All right.
Jack or Dan, is there any additional information that we should be aware of, or that we should be reviewing? Now we're in the immediate future.
I think we're, uh, from my perspective, I think we're good, I think we're making progress.
Okay. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I second the motion.
Okay, it's eight oh two PM, we are adjourned.
Thanks for all the work on this, because, yeah, there's a lot of detail to these red lines, for sure.
I'm an engineer, I'm not a planner. I only do, I only go kicking and screaming doing this.
Oh.
I enjoy it, I enjoy it, I wouldn't say that I enjoy it, but, but, but it's, but it's a no, but when you're rezoning people's properties, it's a no-win situation. If you ask me.
Can you go to the developers', uh, attorney's comments today?
Yeah. And I said, be here tonight, they presented, oh, we can't be here, of course.
Yeah.
Some money, I'm sure.
What's that?
Well, they're a lawyer.
Yeah, they did.
They're a lawyer.
I told them, I sent them, I sent them an email, I gave them, and I said, you know, yes, last week I told them, I said, something back, so. Yeah, I think they did good, it's good input.
Oh, yeah.
It's great input, I mean, with, I mean, I'm not a developer either.
You could be, Dan.
What's that?
You could be.
Oh, yeah, right? I couldn't take the, uh, the ebb and flow of, uh, huh, not again, I got hit with something in the side of the head this day.
Hey, or you could run for supervisor. It'd be good, actually.
My daughter, daughter, you, oh, yeah, I'm in, I'm down here, Raleigh.
Raleigh, okay.
Yeah. My daughter's in, my daughter's the one in politics.
I am leaving too.
Well, yeah, chemical engineer in politics. Yeah, she's, Barb, she's, she was, my, you talk about politics, my daughter, she, she was at the, uh, White House last.